I do.
Okay, good. As I saw you, I saw you light up and I couldn't hear you, so I was worried.
Yeah.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Welcome. Second here. Well, welcome everyone to tonight's special meeting. And appreciate everyone being here. I'll um. When you're, I guess Macy is not attending. I don't think so. Um, Miranda, when you're ready.
Macy's on.
Oh, she is. I'm sorry. You know, I didn't look. I just didn't know specifically which meeting. Okay.
I can't remember if needed. Oh, yeah. No, she's there. I think she can hear us.
Yes, I'm here and I can hear you all. Hey, you ready for me?
Yeah.
All right.
Let it rip.
Mayor Billy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mahol.
Here.
Trustee Corvalon.
Here.
Trustee Kums Isma. Oh. Give me a second.
You guys know if he'll be attending coming late?
Let me grab my.
I said, guys, that this qual disqualifies me from being marshal.
It pays better than the mayor.
Macy, maybe it's just me, but I can't hear you very well.
No, same. I can hear you, but it's just kind of broken up.
All right. Can you guys hear me now? Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so I actually, this was a special one at the last minute, and I actually don't have quorum for this one. I don't know if, Miranda, do you have quorum for this one?
I mean, everyone said they were gonna be, everyone said they were gonna be here. Nicole is running late, but, but we do have.
We have five.
We have five.
So we can, we can get rolling.
I just don't know who we're expecting and.
Oh, you're, we're expecting everyone, but it doesn't look like Eric and Nicole are on yet.
Yeah, sometimes.
So just a note for the record that trustee Kums Isma is not here currently, but will be joining us later. Uh, trustee Mountain.
You're here. John?
We can see your mouth moving. We can't hear you.
Yeah, can you?
There's her.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, you're real quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee Severs.
Here.
Uh, and let's know for the record that trustee Sterling is also currently not here, but will be joining us this evening. And I see that trustee Kums Isma has joined us. Um, can you verbally say that you're here, please? We just took role for you. I noted for the record you were absent.
Yep, I'm here.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
There's Nicole too.
Oh, wow. Look at that. So Nicole, we're taking role. Do you hear?
I'm here. Technical difficulties. Sorry.
It's okay. It's all good. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Um, so this meeting was called primarily for our action item to discuss the Netherlands Police Department. You know, to update, you know, the community mostly and to talk about options we are looking at. And uh. I think um, I just wanted to say if I want to say this now or later, but I'm looking at, if you, if you're looking at, if you've looked at the agenda, you probably are getting the sense that we are um. Really looking at. The, the sheriff's department, and I know more than a few of us wanted to continue with um. I'll speak for myself now. Wanted to continue with the rebuild, but it, but it became clear, you know, I mean, I think the wind came out of our sails and um, in, in, in January and um. It's been, I think, most, most of the board was ready to move on with that reality check, and Miranda made it clear that she could try. The rebuild, she'd be happy to do that, but we might just be in the same boat three months from now, and I appreciate um. The town hall we had on the police situation and felt like that was really productive, and I think that we are, you know, really primarily. Talking about contracts with the, with the Boulder County Sheriff, and nonetheless, we will have open comment and um, you know, appreciate everything, and everyone's kind of bring to the table tonight. So. Randy, do you wanna, is it Miranda or Jennifer? Um, Jeffrey, do you wanna? Go into the aim?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. Um, so the aim that's before you tonight really spells out the different staffing options. That are available with a law enforcement contract with Boulder County Sheriff's Office. Division Chief Chamberlain has provided us these different staffing options um, based on what the sheriff's office is. Um, you know, on recommended staffing levels and what they see as, as they're willing to do. In terms of their staffing. Um, there's three options before you tonight. Option A and option B and then option C. Option A is the option that Division Chief Chamberlain had recommended in the town hall meeting. January twenty, or January thirty first, and that is to have a full-time sergeant assigned to town. Each one of these options actually does have a full-time sergeant. It has four full-time deputies, twenty percent of an animal control officer, and a fifty percent detective assigned to town. Um, the, the option B has no animal control op officer, but it's the same as A without the animal control officer. And option C goes down to three deputies, no animal control officer. Um, the aim spells out how those deputies would be assigned. I'm happy to go into that detail if anybody would like. But otherwise, everything else is in the aim. I did ask Boulder County Sheriff's Office for a lower level staffing option. Um, something lower than D or C, and other county sheriff's office said that they're not willing to go down. In staffing. This is, C is the lowest they will go. Three deputies.
They offer rationale? Do they say why, why they say it wasn't safe or wasn't efficient?
Um, the, the reason is that it really, option C is, is covers their cost. So I think that what happens if they go down to a lower level staffing option. Um, you don't have a backfill deputy, so you don't have somebody to cover for trainings, for sick days, or um, PTO days. And um, the sheriff's office would provide somebody, and so they wouldn't be paid for those services.
They'll be on the hook. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Other clarifying questions to the trustees have?
Yeah, and it was also that they wouldn't negotiate to have the detective out of the contracts, correct? That is correct, yes, because um, the cases and the crimes that happen in Netherlands need to be investigated, so they would not agree. To remove the deputy and um, or reduce the deputy amount.
I went over to Gilton this week, Billy, and talked with Sheriff Armstrong. I understand completely. Uh, why the, why the detective isn't there? He said, never was I ever trained to do what a detective does. Nor would it get done. And I said, well, give me an example of what happens. Well, he said, for starters, all domestic abuse. Um, but in an extreme of, they had a body dumped by the side of the road that was suddenly in their jurisdiction. And it's taken over a year to deal with, so your, your patrolman can't deal with it. And that made sense to me.
Yeah, to clarify for folks who are on the call, uh, because it might be confusing if you, if you see in the previous packets, the, the Lions contract. Which indicates some different staffing levels are possible uh, with BC SO, but I just wanted to clarify with Attorney Mattson that uh. That that contract is not actually gonna be sustainable going forward either, and it's likely to be renegotiated to, to something more like what we're seeing here.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say. They, they do have a new sheriff, you know, Boulder County Sheriff is new. And um, right, that the, the staffing that's provided in other jurisdictions may not be the same going forward in the future.
Yeah, that's the feeling that I got um, from the new incoming sheriff, that maybe he was gonna do things a bit differently and calculate costs a little more accurately to what the services are that they actually provide.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things um, that is another provision in the contract that's the same, no matter what staffing option you choose, is the extraordinary criminal investigations. That's a provision in the contract that should something significant happen in the town. Where there would need to be a lot of deputies, uh, maybe a number of detectives involved. Um, there could be extra cost transferred to the town. Now, I understand under Sheriff Pele that that didn't happen. Um, in the past, and um, the new sheriff Curtis Johnson has said he will, he will do that. He will um, take advantage of that provision.
And as I understand it, even when uh, staffing our own police department, rather than contracting out. When something has happened in town to, to, to that kind of scale or degree, we've incurred additional charges anyway, so that's kind of a normal situation to be in, I think.
Yeah, you would have overtime charges um. And I, I don't know what other expenses, but likely would have additional expenses.
Yeah, we're talking about home explosions and attempted bombings and that kind of activity. Yeah.
Exactly. Also be uh, natural things like fires or floods, that kind of thing as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what other clarifying questions do trustees have for Jennifer and Miranda?
Is there any possibility of adding animal control to option C?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What would an animal control um, provide that a deputy could not?
Well, an animal control officer has different training. Um, they're trained. To handle, you know, dangerous dogs. Um. And so they're, they, they would just be, they would provide a different, different level of service.
Is it a dog catcher?
If you look at the, the spreadsheets, um, they're about half the cost of a deputy. Uh, on an annual basis.
Yeah, I think they're about twenty-six grand. I know the difference between E and B, isn't it right?
But that's skilled, yeah, that's scaled down. If you look at the uh, annual cost of a, a full FTE, they're substantially less.
Okay, yeah.
I'm bringing this up. And, and vice versa, an animal control officer is not gonna have the skills and training of a deputy.
Is there um, any history of Netherlands using animal control from Boulder County?
I think Miranda probably would be able to answer that question better.
Yeah, we've had, um, in my time here, we've only had one incident where it rose to the level that we needed animal control support, and that was more to assess the health and sanitation. Of the property as well as the well-being of the animals. Um, it's pretty rare, though, that we've ever needed to use them. Uh, and, and most things can be handled by code enforcement as well. And so the current keeping animals ordinance that the planning commission was tasked with drafting does uh, reference animal enforcement when it comes to some of those more sanitation. Um, lot size. Uh, I think where you would look for law enforcement is more like the animals at large. Uh, in which case, that's where law enforcement would step in and with maybe support from code enforcement and animal control, but I just, personally, I don't feel that there's a need to have animal control. Would um, if we needed it, we could call that in and get charged um, a daily rate for that if we needed it, like, or is that, you don't have it, you don't have it?
I asked. Yeah, I asked Division Chief Chamberlain that question, if, you know, it could be on a per incident basis, and he said no.
Okay, but I do know in this, and I don't want to speak, I'm just going to make an assumption here. In that case, we didn't get charged for the animal control officer to come up here. She did it because she knew we needed expertise, and my hope would be. That there would be that, at least collaborative relationship with their own animal control, even if we didn't have them, they would still be a resource to the deputies who are operating up here.
How often do you get calls, Miranda, from uh, dogs barking at uh, you know, two in the morning?
Really, we, we really don't. We really haven't. Now, I'm not saying it's, it's not an issue that's out there, but um. We, as a reminder, we didn't, we weren't here overnight, so the deputies were taking those calls anyways, because we never had officers past ten. Wouldn't that just be a regular officer who would knock on someone's door and be like, it's the noise ordinance and blah, blah, blah? Correct. Like an animal, it'd be like. And even one time, I had this like neighbor's dog like snarling at my front door, and we couldn't get out of the house. And I called um, the non-emergency line, and it was just a regular Boulder County Sheriff that came up. Um. Anyway.
Okay. I, I would say, um, I didn't get to talk to Holly with Lions um, very much. We just did a little phone tagging, but um, I talked to both the president, um, Mark. Laces, I don't know how to say his name. Mark, Mark, the present mayor of Superior and the past Clint Folsom. You know, they, they were, Mark's, you know, Mark's memory, Mark has never known Superior without the Boulder County Sheriff, um, but he said, you know, it's, it's worked really well for them. They, they never really consider. Switching to their own, the police department, he, you know, he doesn't know enough history to know, you know, when and if that did happen in the past. Um, on animal control, though, specifically, they bring that in-house and they do it through a code enforcement uh, person uh, who is really more um. Pretty demanding title. Um.
It is a person.
Yeah, it, it, correct. It, it's someone um. Animal control, superior staff to code enforcement official, you know, who has other responsibilities with code enforcement, animals being part of code. Um. And that is really how they totally handle it. Um, the, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, he, we didn't get in specifics about maybe. Um, I don't think he knew specifics about, you know, an incident that would really bring in a deputy, but they, they do it themselves. My understanding of Lions is they don't sub it out from, you know, they don't pay for it, unless I'm mistaken. Um. So neither of those towns pay the sheriff for animal control.
And, and one thing to mention too is that the staffing lo level is not set in stone. So should at a later date, you decide to wanna add animal control or take off animal control, you can do that. Um, the only thing to note is that they do have a, the contract will have a six-month period where if you wanna reduce. The staffing level, you, we'd have to be, Netherlands would have to pay for six months of somebody so that they could find a position for that person.
So we can kind of ramp up in real time, but if we wanna ramp down, we're paying six months.
Yeah, and it might not be ramping up in real time, because as we're gonna see, it's gonna take some time for them to find somebody to fill these positions, but yes, it's easier to add, I think, than it is to subtract.
And my suspicion would be that adding animal control might be the easiest thing to add uh, to the contract and the quickest to ramp up if we did find that we were lacking. Uh, such a service in town, but to pay twenty-six thousand dollars a year for something that uh, Miranda in her, all of her time here has gotten, has had one incident that. Uh, you know, she's actually had to use an animal control specialist uh, seems to be maybe a bit overkill in terms of money spent versus what we gain. It does seem like they won't, they won't let you split. Um, if I remember correctly, the, the detective is a fifty percent is minimum, you know, fifty or a hundred, but it seems like the animal control. They split five ways, if I read that right, isn't that a twenty percent?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, so any other clarifying questions before we move to public comment? If not.
Just a real quick question.
Yeah.
You guys hear me better now?
Um, you're, you're still pretty, still pretty faint. I, I don't know. Um.
Might have to call in. Okay, um, just real quick.
You're good. Just if you talk loud, I think we'll get you, unless you can't, where you are.
I can definitely try. Thanks. So uh, just to clarify a couple of things, the revised budget then is, it is option B, and that's just an estimate, right? That's not what we're paying currently right now um, at an ad hoc basis.
Correct, and I really want to emphasize the word estimate. Like, once we know what level you're going, then we'll really start to plug and play the numbers in to get you the revised uh, the supplemental budget, but this just gives you a general idea.
Okay, perfect. And then the ramp time that was discussed in the document with regard to twelve months. Um, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna have a full staffing. It's just a full permanent staffing, right? Is that, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
No, um, what they really will do is they are gonna find people to, um, Boulder County Sheriff's Office is gonna find people to fill the roles in Netherlands. And they're not gonna put people here. Um, as, as I understand, they're not gonna put people here on a temporary basis. And so what they're gonna do first is they're gonna find a sergeant who wants to come to Netherlands. Um, it will likely be an experienced sergeant, somebody who has worked in other jurisdictions. Um, and could handle running a department, and then they will work and find the deputies to fill the roles. Um, as I understand it, they won't put in a temporary position, but likely the deputies would bid for. Coming to Netherlands and being placed in Netherlands, and, and what I understand is that is, happens in June. Summertime process.
June, June is when they open up that bidding process for their deputies?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's just, that's just how they do it annually every year?
Right.
Okay. And from what I, from what I've heard from, from a number of sheriff's deputies myself that I've spoken with is that uh, coming up here is often considered kind of a coveted. Position within the sheriff's department, like, there's a lot of interest in, in coming up and, and policing up in the mountains. So I, I think that we, we have, stand a good chance of getting some, some good experienced deputies as well.
I can understand that.
Miranda, I have a, I have a question about the supplemental budget. Didn't we budget over a million dollars for the police department? Are we just blazing through it, paying? Triple, quadruple time on these Boulder sheriffs or what? No, what the supplemental budget would be, would be to bring back, you know, your actual budget for twenty twenty-three. Since, say, say, example, you take option C, you're gonna be paying significantly less in police department, and it is our assumption you will want to then move those savings into other line items. Which is where the supplemental budget comes in. It allows you to adjust other line items. It's not because we are in a financial. Okay. Because right now, we are paying twenty-five, around twenty-five thousand dollars a month for extra duty. It was quick, yeah. Which is obviously way less than staffing itself.
We've paid a lot less for everything from uniforms and vehicles to retirement, uh, to benefits, all that. Uh, we're on the upside uh, through all this. I wouldn't want to continue it, but um, there was a huge uh, delta on. The monthlies, but everything else uh, more than evened it out.
And our intention would be to sell off as much as we could. For example, we have a set at least vehicle, Boulder County is already, it's, it's gonna take that over from us. And which, there's us uh, from our lease. Um, we also are working on some conversations with some other people who are interested in our vehicles, and so our goal would be to bring in revenue as well. Through um, the, the sale of these different items that we can sell off.
And to also clarify, uh, as we ramp up in that nine-to-twelve month estimated period, we're gonna be prorated for our contract during that time. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, so we'd only be paying for whatever staff we have that town has.
Right, so we're gonna see significant savings over the first year anyway, because it's gonna take a while.
Right, and as we always budget, we're always gonna want to create a supplemental budget based on the full amount, because that's just good budgeting practice, but yes, you will ultimately see. Um, depending on what the ramp up looks like, that's when you'll start to see the impact from that Boulder County Sheriff contract line.
Great. Any other clarifying questions before we um. Bring it up for the public? If not, um, we are, love to hear from you. Uh, it's time for public comment. You have three minutes. Just identify yourself, address or relationship to town. See any hands out there? Macy or Miranda?
No.
Okay, I, yeah, I wanna thank the, I mean, if, if you, and if you um. We're not using the chat function, function, oops, function, so um. Please speak up if you want to talk to us. Um, and um, but I do wanna, in, in still open for public comment, but um. I want to thank all the public comment that happened on January thirty-first, because I think that uh. Was a pretty great town hall, and we really heard from a lot of people with different points of view. And it really, I think, you know, between the flow of, of the public comment and, and what the sheriff's representatives had, had to offer. For answers to our questions, it was a really, um, I think, valuable time spent, so. Um, did you want to give a comment? I saw a chat come up. Sounds. All right, if not, um, we will, go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the board, to trustees for discussion. A motion at some point, or not motion, but yeah, a motion at some point. Well, one thing that might be worth generally addressing, uh, sorry, this should have been in clarifying questions, but uh, the way that this contract works, as I understand it, is uh, these uh. Officers will be assigned to Netherlands for the time that's in the contract. They will not be called away. On higher priority issues down in the flats, uh, just because, you know, things are going on down there. Uh, Netherlands will be their top priority as per the contract. Is that, that's correct, right, Attorney Mattson?
Well.
If I remember.
Really, it is correct. Um, you do have some positions here that are, they're, they're called fifty percent coverage. And so you've got fifty percent coverage at night, and what that means is that the deputy must spend fifty percent of his uncommitted time. In Netherlands, and then the remaining fifty percent can be spent in unincorporated Boulder County. Um, so they, that person would be spending significant amount of time in the town. Um, but then will be also in other areas.
I, I remember them saying, like, if something went down in Allen's Park and they had, you know, the, the right people to respond would be from Netherlands, they would be sending those, but immediately, you know, sending. One or two people to replace them at the same time, and, and you know, as they described the um, Superior in the Marshal Fire, you know, Lions had a whole staff. Throughout the whole fire, and, and so I, my understanding is that it may be that occasionally our police get called away just because they're, they can respond first, but we'll have. It'd be someone sent immediately to replace them and hopefully just a matter of minutes without the actual presence. Indeed, and it's also. I was just gonna say, it's also worth noting that uh, when we were staffing our own police department, they were often called outside of town, right? So, and they, to, to, to assist with, with the sheriff's office. So this is a, this is a common practice in a kind of collaborative policing environment between agencies. Uh, we can't expect them to simply ignore emergency calls that are happening a couple of miles away just because they're outside of town boundaries. Our own police department wouldn't have done that anyway, and neither will Boulder County. Um, however, we do have a contract with them, and so they are obligated to ensure that we have coverage. Even if, even if our actual, you know, physical officers who are sitting in our uh, police department space are called away.
Right, and, and the other thing that I wanted to note is that the current, well, the, the contract that um, Netherlands has with Boulder County Sheriff's Office related to the night work. Is a fifty percent deputy, so that wouldn't change at all.
Great. I mean, because I'm inherently fiscally conservative and uh, don't want to spend money that uh, doesn't actually help the town, to me, it seems uh. Logical and reasonable to go. To me, it seems, uh, logical and reasonable to go with the, the lowest staffing option that the, that the sheriff is himself comfortable with. And we have, you know, identified that the sheriff is comfortable with option C, and that if, if and as we need more coverage, we can add it over the years uh, when we get reports from a sergeant. Because right now I'm, I'm kind of loathe to make any decisions without, uh, recommendations from law enforcement themselves on what's actually going on on the ground. So I would love to see a sergeant come in, start making reports to the VOT, and then we can use that information and that data to determine whether or not we need more staffing. That seems to me to be the responsible, fiscally speaking, way to go about this.
I, I personally would like to see option B. I'm not comfortable with the 50% coverage during the day. Um, I don't see why we have to be fiscally responsible on this when the voters have proved, um, extra money that would cover that difference in the sales tax. And specifically, for most people, it was intended for police coverage. I've heard from many people, um, on Boulder County Sheriff's side and the local police desire, but nobody has ever said to me, I would like less coverage, um, than we used to have. So I personally think B is the way to go. Um, I don't want to be the person responsible for a situation during the day, when if we just would have had that officer present, it, it could have been a better outcome. I don't want that on me. I don't think we need to be cheap on this. Um, and I originally was thinking we'd use the animal control, but after having this conversation, I see that it's not necessary. That's where I'm at.
Yep, I too, and sort of hovering, hovering around option B as well. Um, I mean, I don't have to articulate too much more than what Tanya's already stated, but, um, I think folks are looking for that presence. Um, like she said, nobody's been asking for less coverage. Um, we have the money and the budgets, and while it is easier to ramp up than to take off, as long as we give a six month notice, we do have that option still. Um, and agreed on the, the animal control after hearing some of the data presented today.
What about everyone else?
Um, I, I voiced my opinion earlier. I go for option A. Um, it's easier to back off than to add. I think Jesse's got a very different point of view than I do, so I'll let Jesse pipe up.
Wait, just to correct, is it? Did we hear earlier that it's easier to add or to back off?
It's easier to add. We, we, it's easy to do both. We just gotta pay six months' worth to go down, to decrease.
Okay, okay. So it's easier to add, um, take off stills that require six months' notice.
The add takes longer, yeah. Jesse?
Can't hear you if you're talking.
Yeah, I just muted. I would say I'd, I'd be more inclined to go with B or C myself. I, I can see the points of both Eric and Tanya's arguments. Um, I like the idea of allowing the sergeant to get his feet on the ground, um, get familiar, start making reports to us. And then, you know, if he's going to recommend, um, we increase based on his, you know, gaining more experience and knowledge of our community, then we ramp up and, um, I, uh, yeah, so, I'm, I'm inclined towards B or C, you know, Tanya, I think makes good arguments as well, so. Um, could probably go for either one of those two.
So I'm not getting much traction for A.
Well, I mean, originally I thought I would be all about animal control, but hearing Miranda say that she's only used it once and, um, doesn't recommend.
Doesn't mean we've done a good job with animal control. It means, uh, it's just never been, uh, dealt with. And I talked with Roger Cornell a couple of times about this, and he's trying to put a new ordinance in place, which really is not an ordinance if you can't enforce it.
I guess I would, I would argue really quick that I was, someone was working on that ordinance, that, that we have it built in such a way that animal enforcement isn't involved in it, because it's not a current service. Um, you know, I, I agree. I don't see anything wrong. I just, I do think there is an ordinance that has stronger language coming forward, where historically where we needed animal control was because our code wasn't strong enough to offer guidance on proper keeping and care of animals.
And Miranda, wouldn't a regular deputy be able to knock on someone's door and tell them they were in, not in compliance with the code? Or is that something that a animal control person has to do?
I mean, I guess I don't, I looked at Attorney Madison to make sure. I mean, we've got some situations where code enforcement, if you've got a sanitation or keeping of animals care issue, that's where code enforcement would step in.
Who's that? Is that Safe coming on? Ah, yes. And what's the, what's the consequence from Safe Bill?
So ultimately, they would eventually, if it rose to the level in which a citation was needed, they would then contact the deputies to write that citation, but we typically try to go the warning route as far as we can get until that citation is needed.
Gotcha, gotcha. Um, I mean, I could be talking to A, but I just feel like B is like the nice compromise choice. And I, I don't want to sacrifice real, like deputies.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess, uh, my only concern, I would, I would opt for option C if we could ramp up quickly. In other words, we could get more support real time, you know, however long it takes to get a sheriff up. And then also the same with animal control. However, my only concern is that six month or 12, I think it's 12 month staff ramp time. So I would say, in light of that, if I'm understanding it correctly, if we go with option C and we decide six months down the road that we really needed more sheriff support, then we're looking at 12 months from that point in time to fully staff that, that, um, option B, you know, upgrade. So if, if that's correct, if I'm not mistaken on that assumption, then I would go with option B.
Yeah, but, I mean, I mean, I think 12 months was to go from zero to 100.
Yeah, right.
And I think if we're at 75, it seems hard to believe that it'll take 12 months to go from 75 to 100.
And a lot of it is gonna depend on Boulder County Sheriff's, um, office on their staffing level, what they, what they look like. Are they, um, needing to hire deputies for unincorporated Boulder County, for the other municipalities that they're working with? It just really depends on, on where they're sitting. But if Netherland wants to put somebody in place, then Boulder County would work to find somebody as quickly as possible to, to put that person in place.
And Superior did just add one. So I, I mean, adding along the way is, um, now, now they're up to two deputies per shift around the clock, so they added another deputy to the night shift. Um, yeah, he, he didn't, he didn't mention much about lag time or anything. He just said, we're up. And, you know, we both cursed the, defund the police movement and, um, you know, and, and just talked about the fact that nationally, it's, it's hard to hire law enforcement. And, um, you know, Superior's, they just aren't. They're, they're adding another. Now, I don't know where they're at in that process.
And I also, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Eric.
I just understood it that, um, that, you know, it's gonna take nine to 12 months to fully ramp up here. That doesn't mean it's gonna take nine to 12 months for us to have police coverage. Like, they're gonna, they're gonna send deputies up here right away. Right? And if we add a deputy, what was that?
No, they, they won't send deputies right away. So you'll still have to pay extra duty, um, coverage with, um, they will get a sergeant in place, and then they will hire deputies, put in deputies to fill in for Netherland. But it's gonna be people who are assigned here, um, who, who want to be here. And that is, we've been told over and over that that will take time.
And up until then, it'll be the same as what we have now.
Exactly, right.
It's not like, I guess my point was, they're not. We're not gonna not have cops there's presence in town during that time.
Correct.
Right. I think we're, the language got hung up, as you said, deputies. And so, but yes, we will still have the 50% coverage at night, and we'll have the um, sergeants that will come here first, and then the deputies will fold in. That's your understanding, Eric?
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I, I will say, I don't know. I haven't talked to them about the night coverage. Um, I don't know if that's gonna stay the same. Because the night coverage will be wrapped in to this contract.
So they might drop us?
I have a question, um, that maybe you could ask them no matter what plan we go with, um, which is, so we get a sergeant in place, say in a few months, whatever, and, and then, you know, the plan we picked, you know, asks for X number of more debt, um, you know, deputies. Um, are we like, is their thought is, oh, you know, that means we're extra dutying those three spots or two spots or whatever? Or is it just, we'll give you the one extra duty and then we'll fill in as we go? Is that something you could have to clarify? Like, say we go with, let me just blab in here. Um, so we go with option C, and then, um, three full-time duty, you know, one full-time sergeant through full-time duties in the detective, detective, but, but they've hired the sergeant, but they don't have any deputies yet. Now, we, we just need to pay extra duty for one deputy at a time, and then versus like trying to have three or just one extra duty. And, you know, and then as they actually fill the positions on a more full-time basis, do we keep having to fill those gaps with extra time, or at some point do they say, well, we've got one sergeant, one deputy, we're good up there for now, and we'll just add people as we go versus still trying to fill in with extra time? Does that make sense? Right now?
Um, so I, I, I think I assume that, I mean, the way that they're, the way that the coverage would work for C is you have your sergeant, and then the deputies for the day would be split between two people. Uh, because they work 12-hour shifts, so one day, one week, a officer deputy works three days, um, another officer works four days. So likely, if you had one deputy here, you would need, uh, extra duty for those other days. And, and then for the evening coverage, I mean, I assume that the same people will fill, will be in place for the evening coverage that you already have. I mean, that's a, a really reasonable assumption. Um, and so that that should already be in place. Um, so once they get a, a deputy in, then you're just paying for the three or four days a week for extra duty shifts.
Um, so I have a question with option C. It says 50% coverage for during the daytime, so that means half the time, there's nobody in ed as a deputy. Um, the sergeants, I guess, always there? Or no, he's, there'll be times when nobody is around. It's, it's like how it is now. And only in emergency, like a death, would they come? They're not gonna come if someone's creeping around, or would they?
The, they told us that the, the sergeant would be a working sergeant.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he can't be there seven days a week. I mean.
Right. He can be there when other people aren't, right? Which is sort of a logical way to split their, their working time. So there's, so that there's always somebody there.
I don't know. I don't know.
But, I mean, that might be a good question on the ramp up. Like, you know, if you've hired the sergeant, is your next hire gonna basically work opposite the sergeant until you hire your third? And so we know at least that they're, they're filling the days with people that are gonna go, you know, that we're paying for in the contract versus extra duty, um, as we go. But, you know, we can't, we can't control their scheduling, but we like to think that's how they would control their schedule.
I will say too, that I invited Division Chief Chamberlain to come tonight to be able to answer questions. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it. Uh, but I would imagine he would be happy to come back for another Board of Trustees meeting to answer additional questions if you wanted.
Probably to make, prefer to, that we make some choice first.
Yeah, yes. Oh, I, again, I mean, we, we have that sales tax. If we want to get rid of it, then I'd be okay with C, but I feel like people wanted police coverage. I want to give it to them. I don't want to be the one responsible for the lack of coverage that we would be getting with C. That, I'm still a B person, 100%.
I'm not, I'm not against what you're saying, Tanya, logically, but I do think that, that, that tax bill passed because it was our own police department, not because we were gonna give it to the sheriff's department. And I do think there's a slight difference there. It was our police coverage.
Yeah, but I think there was the misconception that Boulder sheriff wouldn't be here like our police department, that they, they would just be like how they adjunct sort of situation. And I think it was pretty clear during the, the town hall that they would pretty much become embedded within the community and be pretty much like our officers. Um, they'd be ones we'd probably really like and ones that maybe everyone's different, you know? So I think, I don't know. I still, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm still B. I don't feel like, why, why are we going cheap? We have the money, you know?
I'm cheap.
So is it, does everyone, has everyone given their, um, I mean, keep, keep going. Who else has something to share? I'll, I'll share at the end.
I don't know, but you have, Billy.
I was, I was gonna ask you, Eric, really, really quick. Eric, so the, the disparity or that you see or the difference between option B and option C, you're thinking option C because you don't see that there's going to be, you, you don't perceive a threat or a gap in, in coverage that's worth paying for the extra of what option B provides.
Based, based in, yeah, based in what we're seeing right now in terms of having kind of a light police coverage, uh, I'm not necessarily seeing that there's a desperate need to, uh, spend as much money as possible to get, to get the coverage up. I think that if we did it in a more, more considered, in a slower kind of procedural manner, and we got a sergeant in, the sergeant kind of said, these are the kinds of, this is the kind of call volume that I'm getting. These are the kinds of calls that we're looking at. You know, my deputies are feeling strained on this end or on that end, and, you know, we could do with another, another 50% of a, of a deputy, then I would say, okay, let's consider that, and let's add another 50% of a deputy. But right now, we're just sort of projecting, projecting into huge without Matisse, right? And I would, I would like to see it based on somebody who's actually policing in our town, what they feel like they need to be best supported. And if they feel like they're doing great without another deputy, then why, then why pay for it?
And let me clarify that, because wasn't that what the recommendation was from Boulder County during our, um, town hall? Is they'd actually recommended option A. Attorney Madison, I can't remember what that was based off of. Was that just based off, you know, previous experience? Had they looked at records? I mean, what was that based off of?
It's based off of the call records for Netherland. Um, and I understand that, uh, Chief Chamberlain is pretty familiar with Netherland and, and the calls and but it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be a limited amount of information. He hasn't worked up here. So I don't know that it would be a real based on real experience. It's just gonna be assumptions based on, on call logs and what he's heard from other people.
And just to clarify, if I were Division Chief Chamberlain, I would recommend option A as well, right? But that's not, that's not necessarily, you know, to me, that, that it's logical that, uh, that he would say, yeah, get, get as many people as you possibly can, uh, for your town. But at the same time, I think that if we are more considered about it, we might end up at a sweet spot that wasn't, wasn't predicted. And we don't have the option of really doing that, right? If we go all out right off, right off the bat.
And it just, um, to clarify, because maybe I've been working on a very different assumption, Miranda or Attorney Mattson, like, the coverage that we have now, like, to this day, like, what, you know, what is covering Boulder County covering now during the daytime that's equivalent to some of these um, price packages we're looking at?
We have extra duty, uh, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Every day someone signs up for, and that's 100% committed time here, but I think it's a little bit tricky because we're paying. committed time here, but I think it's a little bit tricky because we're paying double time rate for them to be here. Where, so. But their coverage is one, is one officer all day long, committed time here, hundred percent.
Think that would more, so the coverage that we're experiencing now, do you, which of the options do you think would reflect what we're receiving now in terms of coverage, not price?
Yeah.
Any, any motion?
Probably, I guess it's hard, probably B, because we don't have animal control, we just have the officers.
Rather than C?
Every day.
Pretty much, it's like around three to four days a month, we typically, we don't, but, but pretty much we have every day filled.
Okay, so that's still sort of.
Again, reason, no sergeant.
Sorry, Eric, you're kind of breaking up from time to time, can you say that again?
I said, I just wanna clarify that I think we keep on ignoring the sergeant.
Hmm.
Right?
Like.
As like a mainstay.
Employee of the town of Netherlands. Basically.
That we don't.
Yeah, I, I would like to just add a few arguments for option C. To piggyback, I feel like Eric is really the only one making arguments for it at this point and I'll, I'll add, add on, and that is that, um, likely as projected by the sheriff's department, they're anticipating a year-long ramp up. So I think within that year, let's say in six months, we're at seventy-five percent, but we've had some time to establish rapport and relationship with the sergeant as our full-time employee and as a leader of the new police department and, or the new police presence in Netherlands. And we will also have ample or some more time than what we have now to consider public input. You know, feedback from the public. And that will still give us, potentially, we haven't lost any time in terms of ramping up to option B at that point. And it, what, what it does give us is committing less funds upfront and allowing ourselves a more considered approach and, um, to establish a relationship with the new sergeant to, to get more, um, take a more deliberate ramp, ramp up process, allow the public to chime in. You know, I, I also appreciate, um, the comments that Ames made earlier. And, you know, for us to consider how we might be able to move within this new relationship around how we handle community policing in this town, we, gives us more time to, to shape that relationship before we've committed as much of a budget. You know, perhaps we get a volunteer advisory board in place and, um, you know, and, and we continue to spend and grow, perhaps, or, you know, maybe it's going horribly and, and we wanna go back towards, um, local policing after a year. But those are the reasons why I think option C has, has some validity. And I think I'll also option C at a hundred percent is going to be more police presence than what we're experiencing now, which for me is not bad. I'm actually quite content with our existing police presence in town. And I've heard stories of.
Crime is seasonal.
Sure.
What, what was that, Tom? Sorry.
Crime is seasonal, and this is not the season for crime.
Is it kind of like a holiday?
Summer.
Yeah.
When it's warm.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, with regards to the, there'll be more people living outside in the summer, so I, I mean, that is definitely correlation. What else?
To clarify something real quick, um, so Miranda, when you were making the comparison of the coverage that we have today, just to Eric's point, um, were you, were you also thinking of the sergeant in that as well, or just the deputy coverage?
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking about deputy coverage, I mean, I, you, you gotta think about, I don't know exactly how they'll structure their time, the sergeant, but the more deputies you have, the more overlapping you have with multiple officers. So I think it just comes down to currently, we only ever have just one officer on all day long. Whether it was a sergeant or a deputy, it's one.
I, I like that idea of saving money, but I'm, I'm curious to know if there is, uh, scope creep in that area. In other words, we have a crime spike and then we have to call in the, the coverage that we were talking about to go from C to B um, in the interim until we get ramped up. Are we also paying that double time? Rate that we're paying right now currently? And if we do, uh, would that possibly blow past even the budget for just going with option B to begin with? Just thinking ahead, I guess, in terms of how that coverage looks if we jump from C to B. To clarify.
I, I like that, I've been, um, so, I mean, I think I, I, you know, kinda came into this.
Question answered yet, though.
Oh, sorry, answer your question, or get your question answered.
Were you asking, John?
Sorry, I'm just asking for clarification on, on that, I'm not sure.
You're saying if, if there was to be a spike in crime and if we were to decide we need this, this extra presence, um, in the moment, would that be extra duty? My, my, my thoughts is the answer is yes, um, if, if we decide we need it.
Well, I think, I think you probably have an option there.
Yeah, because we have sheriffs that roll through anyways. They use this as their.
You could choose to hire extra duty, likely. Um, and what that is, is really just putting, as I understand it, Miranda can correct me if I'm wrong, you're just putting out a clipboard in their headquarters and these are assignments that officers can take to earn extra money. And so that's what Netherlands could do, um, and then you could also say, we wanna pay for an additional officer, we wanna go to option B.
Okay, so there's no gap, there's no stopgap solution where we're temporarily paying that double time rate?
No, we would have to force.
Okay.
It would be a choice on our part whether we wanted to.
Gotcha.
Not sure if we get it.
Yeah, and it's completely optional, so, you know, you, you can't, you can't mandate that an officer take extra duty, right?
Yeah, what, what I noticed when we talked with the sheriff this spring, there are competing demands, uh, in the fall, um, CU needs extra cops for the football games and, and there's, uh, when the dead are here in July, uh, all hands are in deck at the stadiums. So you're, you're in a mar- open market, uh, with this approach that you have to deal with.
Yeah, no, I totally understand inter-agency support and those sorts of things, those are, I think those would probably be the case even if we had our own department, wouldn't they? I mean, isn't that kind of an expectation? No? Oh, okay.
Officer Fine Lovin never came down to do a CU football game.
No, okay, in that direction, you're right, in our direction, there are, but you're right.
No, but I do wanna clarify that we have, I mean, when the Marshall fire happened, Troy did extra duty to support, uh, down in Louisville. So it is, and it, it had, that happened.
Yeah.
Just there wasn't a lot of us to spare to go elsewhere.
Gotcha, okay, I, I, yeah, all my, my questions are answered, I, I think I'm solidly in the B camp at this point. It just feels like there, there could possibly.
Let's go for A.
I, you know, I, I also fall in the, uh, the fiscally conservative crowd on this one. Based on what we heard that, you know, we've, we've had great coverage, I feel like. And again, to your point, Tom, I totally agree with you on that summer's coming, which is kind of the opposite of, uh, that.
RTD has said they are gonna send, they are gonna do the August thing again to send anybody up the hill that wants to come for free. And we had, we had a spike out of that. Um, Miranda, I mean, is there anything else in terms of patterns of, of when policing is needed that we should be thinking about?
You know, when, when we did, when Jen and Larry were here, we talked a bit about that and, and typically mornings are slower and then like afternoon, two o'clock, things start to ramp up. Um, you're seeing obviously in the winter, Eldora traffic coming down, you know, school getting out. So it was like really that two to ten was a big place where more coverage appeared to be needed. Um, that's often where our overlap occurred, but then we would start to trickle out the closer we got to ten o'clock.
Okay.
Sounds like we have consensus, nobody, I hear nobody, no arguments for, um, animal control, except for from Tom, I suppose, and, um.
Please, Jesse, give me that.
I'd like to, I'd like to speak, I get you. I haven't talked yet, so, um, I kinda walked into this kind of, uh, somewhat ambivalent, because ultimately initially I wanted the, um, um, to go with rebuild, but I, you know, over the last couple, month and a half, I've come to the realization that that doesn't make sense logically anymore, so I, you know, I'm definitely opened to the Boulder County Sheriff. Um, I was somewhat ambivalent on parts, on, on elements of this. Um, but not so much on the animal control, I, I feel like that is money we don't need to spend, um. I, 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 you know, and it sounds like we can choose to add it later, but I, but I was kind of, um, in my mind, animal control, no matter what we did, seemed like just money we didn't need to spend and hearing that we've had very few calls. And I even think about like, so where do the animals go if they take a stray dog away and you've got some homeless or some person up here who doesn't have a vehicle? And they gotta go get their dog and they take the bus, you know, I mean, and they can't put their dog on the bus, so I think about things like that. So I, I've been pretty much, I guess, not ambivalent about animal control, I don't think we need it, and, um, I think Eric's idea, or Eric's logic is kinda, I mean, I, I, I do see it, it's ramping up no matter how you look at it, we're going from zero to whatever we go to and, um, the, the fact that sergeant would be the first person they bring on board and the sergeant could start giving us regular, um, input on how things are going and what the sergeant sees and needs, um, to, um, you know, that, that sees that Netherlands would need. And, um, I, I, there are, Tanya, um, and I, she brought up it, it to me earlier today, something about, you know, just traffic control and, you know, I pointed out that Eldora uses, you know, they, they do the extra duty for, um, they pay for extra duty for, um, sheriffs to be right there at the Eldora turnoff on most, at the end of the day, on most weekends and holidays. Um, and that, you know, that, like, if we wanted to get targeted, this is kind of geared more towards, I talked some with the superior mayor about, you know, like, certain things that they feel like are priorities, that they kind of make a request of the sergeant or of the department, of the sheriff's office to like, you, you know, that, that, that's things that are specifically important to them, that, that seems to be, that seems to be fluid for them, that they can do that. They pay extra duty when they need it, but they also can somewhat prioritize what they want their, their folks to do, and I, I, you know, and that could be something that we, you know, talk with the sheriff's department about what kind of, you know, what kind of, um, say, do we have in, in, in kind of priorities, you know, and, and I think working with the sergeant will probably be really where that starts. So, um, I, but, but I, I think ultimately I lean pretty firmly on C now, because I, I do think, uh, if we start, you know, we, we've gotta build up to get to C and, and if we listen to the sergeant and see that, you know, and the sergeant and, and our own observations, make it clear that we're doing good, then we would stick with C, but if we realize we need more, we just say we need, you know, B, and I, I think really if we're at full staff at C to get to, um, D would really be more of a six-month ramp, you know, I, I just don't, it doesn't make sense to me that we'd be back to zero, count in twelve months to pick up one person. So I, 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 I do lean towards C with no animal.
One hand, one up.
Tanya?
Miranda, I have a question about when we were staff, when we had Larry Johns, Fine Lovin, JP, Eric and Troy. What would that be most similar to? Is that like a C or?
I mean, the, the C is hard for me to compare to because of that fifty percent committed time and when, when you had officers, they were here all the time.
So, I mean, that was a considered fully staffed department or are we still, were we still understaffed at that point?
Um, we would, we were short one, so close to fully staffed.
In our ideal world, we wanted to have more of a B scenario, I think.
That's what we have budgeted for.
Yeah.
It's what we've been doing for this year is a B.
Because, I mean, we, we've never had a police department where there's just like one guy by himself all the time. All the time.
So we did, I mean, being short staffed, we did.
Yeah.
That was everything.
Sure, with Fine Lovin, we had her only, you know, it's not ideal. Um, look, I'm, I don't want him out trolling around giving me speeding tickets either, I mean, I, I just hope that I, I, that they would be using their time more wisely, um, that, I mean, I'm sorry to tell you, crime's up everywhere. Like, it's not going down. Um, so I'm still B, um, I feel like that's what we used to have back when we had a police department. And I don't know why we'd give people less, our job isn't to give people less, but if you guys want to, that's fine.
I'm gonna make a motion that we continue contract negotiations with BCSO at, at the option C level of reduced daytime coverage and no animal control. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Where's you?
I realize we were voting on this, but that's fine.
It's an action item, is it not, or am I, am I?
Action item.
I read the question before the board, I'm just answering the question. Uh, Jennifer, Doran, is this not an action item?
It is an action item and we would like for you to vote to pick your staffing level tonight.
So, so there's a motion on the floor to go with option C, uh, clean as, as it is in a second?
Yeah, we, we need to move this forward to get it going, right? I mean, if we get four votes, we can get this moving.
Yeah, we can get started and, and then as we go with the sergeant, we decide we need to move to option B or A.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I would, I would definitely be on board with, with option C to, to get this going, I, I'm, I think I'm fairly comfortable with the idea that we're not gonna overrun the budget by having a bunch of ad hoc, um, overage calls, is that your understanding as well, Mayor Billy? Just wanna make sure, okay?
Yeah, I haven't looked at this for the last year and written the checks, um, I think we're safe.
Thank you. Yep, Macy, I don't see Macy, gonna take the role?
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Kums Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold.
No.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
And Trustee Corvalon.
No.
So the motion passes, we'll go ahead and continue with, um, just to go off the question, we'll go ahead and continue contract negotiations with the Boulder County Sheriff's Office at the option C level for now, reduce daytime coverage and no animal control.
And just so you know, for next steps, um, what I would expect to happen is a contract will be finalized and it will come back to you for approval likely on a consent agenda item. Um, and then the Boulder County Commissioners would also need to approve it as well.
Thanks, Jennifer.
It's the timeline for having the commissioners approve it. I didn't realize that was a step.
Yeah, they have, they have to approve any, any contracts. Um, I don't know how often they meet, but this is a form contract that BCSO has used in the past, it's not, it's not, um, a tricky contract. Um, I will follow up tomorrow and ask Division Chief what that timeline is.
So, thanks.
All right, well, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Welcome to your journey.
Are you doing the retreat tonight?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
This was strictly one thing.
No. A special, a special meeting, um, and I learned this myself, uh, I, I thought the same thing as a work session is generally one thing, but with a special meeting, other things can be on the, um, uh, on, on the agenda, and so we did put a discussion item in there for Board of Trustees' retreat. And I think. And I think. Miranda, would you?
Yeah, so, so we put this on the last agenda to talk about the Board of Trustees Retreat. There was a desire. Amongst some board members to find a way to really get together. Under a retreat where the focus would be on discussing emerging issues, addressing any concerns, clarifying roles and responsibilities. Setting goals and priorities, and then of course work on, you know, towards a more cohesive board. I think at this point, when trustee Blakemore was here, there was obviously a big desire to really understand and set our goals and priorities and we have yet to do that. So retreat is a great space for that dedicated time to occur. So really, I kind of been looking for you like who, what, where, when, why here, but mainly it's who, who should be in attendance outside of the Board of Trustees. Where would you like it held? And we're thinking maybe somewhere outside of town. When would you like it to occur? And what specifically would you want to focus on? I did talk with Chris Lemay, who is our. Dola representative, and he's led many retreats for boards before. He's happy to do that for us and would do it for free. And so I do think we should go with Chris Lemay because he has done this for years. To date, and he did recently just do two municipalities retreats and they were. Well-attended and successful. And I'm talking to their city manager, they did recommend that he be considered for this.
How much time would we be dedicating?
That's also kind of a part of that discussion.
I honestly don't have a whole lot of time for this personally.
Where Dola, there were some successes with the Dola guy. Who attended and how successful were they and how much time did they take?
They did do an all-day retreat, where it was their Board of Trustees and their department heads. It was split where their Board of Trustees kind of started in the morning and then department heads came in the afternoon. But it was really kind of focused more around strategic planning and getting the goals set. And that was their desire, but you know, you could use it for whatever you feel is necessary for this board.
I don't have a whole day. I'm sorry.
Billy, I'd have you weigh in first. What do you, you're the leader of the pack. What are you thinking?
Well, I mean, I, I do think. We lack cohesion and, and I hear it from people in the community, I hear it from people. And the board and town staff and, you know, people who are paying attention. We lack cohesion. I think a lot of us have a lot of drive to get. You know, to see things happen in, in town. And we have a lot of things that are priorities for us, but we don't. We haven't really taken the time to sit down and just like. Listen to each other specifically in the kind of more focused environment where we know really what, what people see as important. I feel like the BOT goals were very important. That Karen was working on. And I, you know, I wanted to get, we'll put it off till this year so that we could take the time to really put our heads together on it. And, and, because I think, you know, even, doesn't mean we have to agree on everything. We can have different ideas, but if we take the time to understand each other more and. And, and work together, you know, and just really know, know specifically what's important to people and. I, I think that would allow us to be cohesive and also way more effective because. Even if I don't agree with something, that, that doesn't mean I won't work hard to support an effort that I feel like ultimately. Maybe it's good for the town, even if I don't like it. And, 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 and kind of see, would like to see that reciprocal all the way around the seven of us. Because ultimately, if we work together, whether we agree on things, we all have different strengths. If we can work together better. If we, the town is better served. And, and that to me is just time. Away from the meeting with less of a time constraint and we, we are all hurting for time. So I understand Tanya, the resistance. But I also just feel like we are just sometimes a bunch of Lone Rangers and um. And sometimes working against each other versus with each other. And the town does not serve by that. So, that's my.
Billy, would, would the river, would the river be a good place to do it?
Well, yeah, river would be awesome. A couple of days in the river would be amazing. Timing wise, it's hard to know when and how, but there'd be a way to do that. Jesse and I were talking, and I think Jesse, you might talk to you Tom about like Gwyn Hut, which is like the Jenny Cabin, you know, and I actually looked into that some more and kind of. Got a sense of what that might, it's like four and a half miles from the Nordic Center one way. So I mean, like, could it be a hut that's nearby? I think, I think somewhere outdoors a little has, to me, to me, sounds good. Last time they did this. I believe it was at the Happy Trails Coffee Shop in two thousand and sixteen, from what I understand, where they, last time they said goals. Now, I don't know if, if that, you know, if there's been any kind of retreat, or, you know, we're calling it a retreat and. Help me change the name if you don't like it. Help us change the name if you don't like it. And. I mean, I, I think something outdoors, you know, I love the idea of river or hut, you know, if, if we want, if we're looking at something like April. Sooner than it might be a little chilly in the river unless we travel kind of far away. And that, that may not work so much. So, so I think the reality is what, what can people free up? You know, a day. Yeah, I, I, in my opinion, a fairly good amount of a day would be a. Reasonable amount of time. I think, you know, something like an overnight or something gets, gets to be, maybe too much for people to pull off. But I think taking a little bit. You know, out of town or, you know, not necessarily, but, but I, I think not going too far might be smart just for sake of time, you know? But I think putting yourselves in a different element. During the day, we're awake and, and, and alert and um. Would, would have benefits for, for the board and the town and each of us.
I'd have to agree with you. I think we, we've got a lot of work to do on cohesion. And I think we could, breaking the pattern a little bit can only help. If people can, can carve out the time. I would carve out the time.
I would too.
May three.
So, okay, we have three in the raft.
I love the idea of the hut.
Seven panels.
It's a great idea.
Typically, like Fridays, or even if we had to do it on the weekend, I could make that work. It's a little bit harder Monday through Thursday for me.
And for Friday, it's impossible for me, so.
That's right. Friday is a bad one for you.
Well, that, that narrows it down.
It sure does.
We can't do it without you. You're, you're the, you and Tanya are the, are ancestors.
That just means that we're low on the totem pole. Because you guys get built on top, right? But yeah, I, I mean, I don't have, I have no time at all as, 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 as everyone does, but you know, I'll, I'll do my best effort to. To carve out a moment for this. I do think it would be hugely beneficial if, if and when we do this, everybody came with sort of a ranked priorities list. That we could cross-reference with each other and see where we actually do align. And try to make those the top priorities for this board moving forward, rather than. You know, everybody sort of not knowing what each other's priorities are and putting forward their ideas that might not be what everyone else is interested in. So. I think it'd be great if we could just, you know, draw some lines across each other's ranked priorities and see. If something emerges as something this board could accomplish in the next year, but you know, before the next election happens.
There's gotta be something we agree on.
I, I, I bet, I bet there is. And I bet if we, we focus more of our time on that, rather than the debating the fine intricacies of things we don't agree on. We might actually accomplish something.
And Eric, are you referencing the BOT goals, like that, that, that document that was kind of started between everyone?
Sure. I mean, I think that's a good starting point and worth reviewing just to get your mind going on like what. You know, what everyone's been talking about over the last number of years or so, but I know that everybody here has. Passions about what they would like to see for Ned, and I'd like to know what those are so that we can maybe all work on them together.
Are reporters invited? Just kidding.
Is a great idea for, as a secondary session, right? To sort of then, 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 then talk to our department head and see what their, you know, main struggles are, maybe even, maybe even first, maybe we should even do that first.
I, I think that I would do it second because I would want to know if, if we decide on something, how they implement it.
Yeah, that works for me.
Does that give you what you need, Miranda?
What, what else do you need? Yeah, I, I mean, because we talked about the, the who, the who we've, you know, you know, you brought up Dola as a potential. You know, I mean, hopefully the, you know, the who would be seven of us plus. You brought up Dola, you know, a moderator, and, and that is really, if this Dola, represented from Dola seems like a person to go with that. That sounds great. I think department heads, I agree. And, and yeah, I mean, as for the sequencing, I don't. See the value both maybe having them come first is important to really just learn more about the nuts and bolts and the needs from, from the staff that we.
That we could do if, if we do the goals as us, as a group. We could even do the how with the department heads in a subsequent meeting saying, walk us through. What it would take, because then after that comes the budget and the scheduling.
That might make more sense, actually. I mean, the BOT goals that Karen put together are great, but they also got a little. I mean, they, they were just like, she wouldn't, you know, and part of it was, Karen was compiling ideas, so all these, all these things were in there, even things that just totally conflicted. So it's a bit of a confusing document, but I think using it as a basis to get started seems smart because it also did bring together, you know, there's a lot of good ideas in there. Things like water rights. I, I think we're on the same table that, that's important, you know? And we need to do, we need to do by next February so that we, we are maintaining our, and, and securing those. So.
But I've made less than the middle of the night too, Billy, and in the morning, they don't look so good. And they're unranked.
Right. And, and that, and that list got, got, got kind of unwieldy, but at the same time, it's, there's a bunch of stuff in there and we could go in and. You know, I mean, maybe it's just we, we all read it or look it over as reference and then we come in kind of clear and, and, and talk. I think, I think individually, we all got to kind of.
That, that paper really doesn't represent BOT goals. It just represents everybody she spoke with and she wrote down. At what, any places she would meet somebody, what they want.
Those ideas got edited out even when they totally didn't go together and so it kind of.
I mean, I don't even think we need to look at that document, but if, I mean, I already looked at it.
I'd like to have the dead come to Netherlands in July too, but it's not in the cards.
Listen, I, I can't commit to this. I honestly don't know my schedule if I'll be able to have a free day like this. So you guys plan ahead without me. If I can, I'll make it. If I can't, I won't.
We'll work, we'll work to make it something that, that can work for folks and, you know, I mean, I mean, obviously it's voluntary, as is this.
Right.
Higher job. And, you know, ideally if we make it something that, you know, looks appealing. You might consider it.
Not everybody has an Eldora pass to go to this hut you're talking about, you know?
No, and, and that would be more, I mean, like, we were talking like. If we did it during, before the end of the season, maybe snowmobiles to pop people up or, you know, you know, it's, it's. It, it, you know, lift and then snowmobile, we'd have to talk to the ski area and see if that's even gonna be an option. And if not, we just have to look elsewhere at another. Another venue. Supplementary cabin.
What's that, Tom?
It sure sounds like fun.
And there's nothing wrong with us having fun. I mean, we, we, this doesn't have to cost much. So it's not like we're gonna burn money. It's really, we're mostly spending our volunteer time, you know?
I, I guess Miranda needs direction before we can break here. Essentially, we're, we're sort of defining a season if we took this approach. Or when we're gonna do it. We're sort of talking roughly about how much time in which sequence. But Miranda, are you getting close to what you need?
I mean, I guess I'm just like, do you want me to send out a doodle poll to like narrow in on this date? Like, I guess, and, and, you know, I. Well, that's, I mean, Eldora's option, Lions is willing to host us at their art gallery, Gilpin's willing to host us, and Estes Park. I, I think that's cool. These are obviously more traditional environments, but I'm, I'm sorry, Allen's Park has their old gallery and they're willing to host us there. I did, yeah, and they're all happy to host us. I think it's just a matter of like really ultimately when, and if that's something we take offline and I do during a doodle poll, that's fine.
Spring. Summer gets crazy for those that have kids. It's almost impossible.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think of, of March, April timeframe, one weekend day. Is that, are we in alignment on that, guys and, and ladies?
Yeah. I think, I mean, I've been leaning towards April just because of all the things we have going in March. And then of course, several of us have, BVSD shuts down for a week at the end of March, so several of us.
So knowing what EPSD works, Billy, does that narrow it down in terms of dates at all?
So, I mean, to me, April's kind of nice because, you know, you know, if we, if we were to tie it into the ski area, we, the first half of April, that's still an option. If we don't. It can, you know. I like the idea of sooner the better because the sooner we feel more cohesive, the more productive. And he also gives us a solid year until the election next year to work together. And, and that in my mind i- is, is a pretty good just amount of time. And obviously that, that's just kind of random, you know, it's, it's not. Necessary, but to me, April seems like, it also gives us time to plan because it's, it's March first tomorrow. So I, I, I think. April is just maybe gives us the good month plus to. Get our ducks in.
If we're in alignment, Miranda, can you work with that?
Yes, I will send out a follow-up email to get some of these other pieces nailed in.
Okay. You'll bring a mandolin off the wall?
That's you, Eric. Bring them all.
Okay, are we complete?
Any other questions or comments? On other, yeah, actually before that, I just have a very fast comment on other business, which you're all, some of you are already waiting on, but um. If we're done with that, I just, another business, I did talk to Claire Levy, and I hope I'm saying her last name correctly in the raster. Friday, I saw Jesse, he was in there meeting with someone, so we were at the camp and do, and um. But I will get you all notes and Miranda says I can, I can email that to you all and just with the old do not reply all at the top. Just a notice about things we talked about. It was good to get some clarification and just a little bit of understanding of the, the commissioners, the Boulder County Commissioners. Priorities as well as, I appreciate questions that you all gave me and, and passed on to me and I asked all those. Combined somewhere where it misses. And so I got, I got answers, you know, some, some we like, some we don't like, and some just clarify what they do or don't. Do, they, they, they don't have purview over everything that we maybe thought they did. So I will get you that and, and I'll have like the, like all caps, it's kind of like my notes. I'll, I'll try to make it super clear, but just. You can reach out to me individually, just reply just to me if you have questions on it. And it, it's just the first discussion as I, you know, her and I clarified and. It just allows us, first discussion between the county and the town, as we, as we talk about the things, I mean, she gets that we want this to be much more of a. Multi-dimensional IGA, if we're gonna do it with them and their needs seem pretty realistic or reasonable too. It, it, it's, you know, it seems like it could be, have benefit and, and that we could definitely steer that, so.
I've talked with all three commissioners separately at different times and they all said the same thing. We'll give you. Exactly what you want, as long as the seven of you can agree on something.
Yeah.
We like unanimity. We really like that a lot. We don't want to deal with a split board and then somebody else comes in and, and a year and. And none of it makes sense anymore. So if we're clear in what we want, we'll probably get it. One other point I wanted to make, I, I'm in Boulder now. I drove up from Denver and right when I come around the corner. At the Chevy dealer, there was a huge billboard advertising Frozen Dead Guy Days. It was really a shock to see it up there.
Wow.
They're, they're going big, they're going for a very wide spectrum. Let's see how they like it.
Yeah, I got interviewed by Fifty Two Eighty, the magazine in Denver, and the guy said to me straight up that the people of Denver are very suspicious about like. The nature of that festival, how it's gonna, you know, but I mean, they're mostly curious, I guess is a better word, but like, it'll, it'll be interesting to see.
Cool. We wish them the best. We, and we're looking forward to ours.
Definitely.
Okay, thanks all.
Please volunteer to have a pie thrown in your face if someone asks you named Natalie for the festival.
Somebody did.
Netherlands. Well, thanks, everyone. I guess we need to adjourn the meeting.
We don't need a motion for that, right?
We had a motion. I'll second it. Macy?
Alright, Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
I think she's gone.
Um, Trusty Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol.
Yes.
Trusty Severs. And Trusty Kumsesmile.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Eight thirty PM.
Thanks, Bobbs.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night, appreciate your time.
Thanks all.
Thanks for making this meeting happen.